Let's tell this meeting to order. First, we'd like to note where our fire exits are through this door to my left here and then through the door through which we all came in today. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And roll call attendance, please.
Member Spencer?
Present.
Member Sprata?
Present.
Member Menard?
Present.
Acting Chairman Delaney? Please take notice that the Zoning Board of Appeals of the Village of Dupuy will hold a public hearing on June 27, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the municipal building 85 Manitowice Street, Dupuy, New York, to consider application of new energy equity for the property located at 4293 Broadway Street, Dupuy, New York, 14043, of Chapter 260, subset 260-28A2, asking for six foot of relief from 30-foot setback requirement. A pre-board meeting will begin at 6:30 PM in the conference room of the municipal building 85 Manitowice Street, Dupuy, New York. Any and all persons interested in such application will be heard at this time.
Okay, please step forward. Give us your name and tell us what you'd like to do.
My name is Caitlin Sathers. I'm with Gordian Energy. We are the EPC contractor of the project. So during the process, or not until the end of the project, we were brought to notice that six arrays of a table were barely encroaching the 30-foot setback, so we're about six feet over it in the air. These arrays are connected to racking that are in ballast blocks that are behind the 30-foot setback. So the part that encroaches the easement is in the air, about six feet. So we were just looking for a variance to be allowed to keep that as is. Otherwise, it's going to be pretty difficult to move these concrete blocks in an entire table when not even the full table is in the easement.
Any of my fellow board members have questions? Uh, Member Sprata?
I'm just wondering how the engineers and the architects could not look at the blueprints to see what the specifications were.
So I came into the project later, like after it started, and I was under the impression that the engineers were aware of the setback requirements. And I was informed at the end of the project that at some point, there was a shift in the design, which moved us about five feet closer or so, six feet or so closer to the easement, and it wasn't caught when that change was made. And when we submitted for a building permit, we were already over that line, and it was just missed by multiple parties. I'm not entirely sure how.
Can that be corrected in a substantial way or an easy way?
It would be costly. The project is complete, so it's a matter of completely digging it up, moving the earth around again where we have vegetation growing. Like, that's how done we are with it. We have grass growing in those areas. So it can be done. It'll be timely and costly as well.
I understand that that's Phase 1 of this project. Is that correct?
Yes. We are not, Gordian, as the EPC, is not involved in Phase 2.
Who is?
New Equity Energy is the developer, but we have not been contracted to build that site yet. We will be bidding it, but we have not been contracted to build it.
Okay, it's not contracted out yet?
Correct.
Okay. I don't have any other questions right now.
Member Menard?
Yes. Because the fence that is erected in that, what we are talking about, if and when the second phase of this project takes place, could that fence be moved at the beginning of the project, at the start of Phase 2?
It can be taken down. I'm not exactly, are you looking to replace it or have it?
Does it not to be replaced, but moved within the setback to give it a little more setback that's there, not take it away? Can it be moved and adjusted?
It can be moved. The only issue I would see is there are requirements for distance between modules, and I'm not entirely sure what that footage is and how much room we have to work with.
Okay, so it's a modular issue with distance, not a, not just a position of defense, correct?
Yes.
So it's modular space, it's the modular space?
What she's talking about modular, she's talking about this thing is created in the module, individual units. Now it's created as one module. She'd have to move the module. I guess what we talked about before was can the fence be altered a bit to move it a little closer? So the fence looks like it's pushed out so much further.
Mm-hmm.
And I know that's one of the questions we had talked about in there is, is there a distance because of magnetic, I forgot the exact term for it, but...
There, there's a distance that the fence has to be away from the modules. There might be a way to work around that, though. We could ground the fence. I'm just not sure if that changes the distance requirement.
Well, if the modules, if they allow the modules to stay, shifting the fence back slightly would probably alleviate some of how bad it looks, because the fence, if you look at it, is really, it looks like it's almost on a sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
And if you were to turn it at a bit of a, you know, 22 degrees or something, and just kind of move it over a little bit closer, you know, that would probably help with the issue.
It wouldn't look so ominous.
That, that's my question, basically, right there. If it can be moved or is there a requirement from the, from the equipment to the fence? Is that an issue?
There is a requirement. I just, I don't know what it is. I want to say, I know in Maryland, it's 16, 16 feet. I don't know about here. And I don't know the exact distance off the top of my head of what's already constructed.
Okay.
So what is the distance now between the fence and the last part of the array?
That's the part I'm not sure of. I don't, I don't.
What is it now?
We'll look at it, it'll say it right in there, just give me one second. There should be a, oh, one, that's right here. I can't read that.
Yeah, it's pretty small. Sorry about that.
Let me, I'm sure if I could blow it up.
This is that way. Is this the fence?
Yeah, it's right here.
Oh, yeah, that's tiny.
There. Five seconds. Move here. This is the one, square one here. So right there.
So, one document here, we have a, there's a 30-foot setback from the property line to the, is it to the array or is it to the, am I saying that right? Is that what that is?
Yes.
Here, let me turn it around, because it's all upside down.
Yeah, it's upside down. Is the problem the fences, is the fence in the wrong spot or the array is?
Well, the fence got pushed out.
Right.
The array should have been back behind that, that 30-foot setback, and the fence was pushed out a little bit into the 30-foot, but as you can see now, the fence is almost all the way up to the property line, which it looks to me like they're holding the same amount all the way around.
Yeah, it doesn't really say.
Yeah, I apologize for that.
I don't have a measurement.
I think that might have been why it was missed. It's a lot of teeny tiny riding on here.
Well, I guess, you know, what we could ask for, if you decide to leave, if the board decides to leave the module there, that they can come back with an answer to our office, find out, you know, what the closest distance is, and they could adjust the fence to that.
Correct, before the second phase starts.
Well, the second phase may be irrelevant if Gordian...
Oh, that's true.
Right. If you put a diagonal in that corner, something 90, maybe a little more, and it could still be far enough away.
Yeah. It looks to me like it's probably between 10 and 15 feet away.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, if you have a five foot, we could adjust it in 10 feet or something more, you know?
Okay.
Depending on what your minimum safe distance is for...
You want that, that whole front line or?
No, no, I would say...
Just the corner.
Just the corner.
Just nip that corner?
Yeah, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, 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 this corner.
That's not a, yeah, that's not a real big, that's not a real big ask right there, and I think that would...
Definitely.
Probably alleviate, you know, looking so ominous in that area there.
Sure. So, like that?
Yeah, exactly.
Instead of the right angle?
Well, you could taper back here, probably closer to where the...
Yeah, like this.
Where it meets the 30 feet, and then kind of taper it over from there.
Okay.
You said that fence could be grounded too, correct?
It can ground it, yes.
Yeah. Isn't it grounded?
Yeah, I keep getting rid of that 90 and doing the angle probably.
If it meets the minimum safe, when you're talking about higher voltages.
Yeah.
You have to have a minimum safe distance.
Safe distance, right distance, right.
So we don't want to, we don't want to cause an issue, but being that it's up in the air quite a ways, I don't know that it would be an issue. But, you know, that's something, if that's what you decide.
And it's a safety factor.
What is the stipulation, then? I could work it out with them, just to my office.
Okay. And then I guess you would, you would want to see pictures and revised drawings before we can move forward?
I wouldn't think that'd be necessary. Not for a fence.
Not for that.
Okay. All right. Well, like, that's all.
Could I make a motion that we, you know, issue a variance with the...
Condition?
Conditions of the changing of the fence, as long as it's safe to move it and do what needs to be done, that obviously it's a lot easier to move a little fence than move, you know, whatever that is.
Yeah.
The whole row, so.
Yeah, that's, I...
So, could I make, could I make that motion to a...
Well, you guys do the criteria.
We need to be specific while we're moving. I assume this wouldn't have happened if you were in the project from the beginning. That's the implication here.
No way.
So we're in good hands now.
Okay. So as we indicated, I'd like to read the criteria for an area variance in New York. There are six. I'm going to read the questions and the answers given. Number one, will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties be created by granting of the area variance? You wrote, yes, construction is complete and final stabilization is starting to spread. Moving this table elsewhere will restart growth of vegetation in this area. I think the answer is probably no with the condition that we discussed. Number two, can the benefits sought by you, the applicant, be achieved by some other method other than an area variance? You wrote, the table in question would have to be completely removed and placed elsewhere on site. The five modules and the setback cannot be moved alone. The whole table would have to be moved. The issue being, this table is held in place by four cement ballast blocks that would be difficult to move, and new racking may need to be ordered if the blocks cannot be moved. And that's true. Three, is requested area variance substantial? You wrote, no, only five modules impede the setback, one full module is crossing the setback, the other four cross only partially. What do we think about that?
Yeah, I think, I've seen it.
And then fourth, will the proposed area variance have an adverse effect or impact to physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? You wrote, no, this array is already installed and does not actually touch the ground in the setback. It is held in the area by a racking system that is not in the setback. The array is completely within the fencing as well. I would say that's true. Five, is the alleged difficulty self-created, which consideration shall be relevant to the decision of the Zoning Board of Appeals, but not necessarily preclude the granting of the requested area variance? You wrote, at some point in the project, the engineers adjusted the plan. This adjustment went unnoticed by all parties involved until the, until the array was already constructed and as builds were engineered, showing the panels, were shifted slightly over the setback. I would just say yes. And then six, what does minimum area variance deem necessary and adequate? You wrote, six feet, and then to allow the five modules that are partially crossing the setback approval to be within the 30-foot setback line. Each module is 79.3 by 39.4 by 1.38 inches. Only one of the modules is fully in the setback, roughly six feet into the setback line, the other four only partially cross. Then all modules are in the air within the fence line. The long and shorter is six feet, right? Or is it more?
This is going to be a little bit of an ambiguous question for the simple fact that we don't know what the minimum safe distance for the fence has to be. The modules would be six feet, yes, but the fence is also in question. So...
Well, that's, that's our answer. At least for now. All right, now, John, you want to restate your motion, please?
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion that we issue a variance pending that it is, the movement of the fence can be done safely within the parameters of what the spacing or the distance it has to be by manufacturer or by whatever the, I don't believe, trust the engineers. You know, you have to go by that, that.
The minimum safe distance for, from, not allowed until election.
I think this can be alleviated by moving the fence, so.
Okay, so we have a motion.
I second the motion.
Seconded by Member Menard. Motion made by Member Spencer. Roll call vote, please.
Member Spencer?
Yes.
Member Sprata?
Yes.
Member Menard?
Yes.
Acting Chairman Delaney?
Yes.
For yes, zero no, variance approved.
Thank you all.
Do you understand what they mean when they say moving the fence?
Yes, the back corner. You want to angle that?
Yeah. So just work with code to make sure you're in compliance.
Send me a diagram, just a basic diagram via email. We'll go back and forth and we'll figure it out. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Please take notice that the Zoning Board of Appeals of the Village of Dupuy will hold a public hearing on June 27, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the municipal building 85 Manitowice Street, Dupuy, New York, to consider the application of Dennis and Suzanne Palutro for the property located at 47 Stewart Drive, Dupuy, New York, 14043, of Chapter 260, subset 260-14B1H, to be allowed to construct a concrete driveway four and a half feet past the allowed five-feet projection in front of the principal dwelling. A pre-board meeting will begin at 6:30 PM in the conference room of the municipal building 85 Manitowice Street, Dupuy, New York. Any and all persons interested in such application will be heard at this time.
How you doing?
Good. I was here for what she was talking about. I'm the property owner, Jason, east of that panels, okay? I put a call in when them were being put up about them being too close to the road, okay? Someone came out, looked at it, never contacted me back, okay? It's the northeast corner of where yous are talking about, and pulling out of my driveway is terrible, because you can't even see down Broadway because of them. And that turn on Broadway is the most thickest curve on Broadway.
Yeah, I'm going to go try to get her back. We forgot to do public concerns.
Yeah, I mean, I was, wanted to raise my hand, but nobody...
I think we assumed you were here for the other panel.
No.
Very sorry.
No. I mean, because the people from the ice cream...
Your parking place?
Yeah. The people from the ice cream, all the workers parked there. And, you know, and people go there, get ice cream, pull out, and I mean, I hate to see somebody get hit, filled with kids. But my question is, is, you know, she's saying there's vegetation. They're just starting to put topsoil down. I mean, and as far as the panels go?
Yeah.
They're wrong, they should be moved. I do construction my whole life. Zoning, if it's not right, they make you make, do it right.
I'm going to have you hold off until we get her back here. All right, did we stop the record? Stop the record for a second. We're going to have to reopen the hearing, rescind the vote. I'm sorry, reopen it, rescind the vote, reopen the hearing, ask for public concerns and comments, then vote again.
Yeah.
So sorry about that.
All right, I was wondering, I mean, when he's all folded on it, I thought that wasn't right, because...
I agree with you.
I was here to express my opinion.
And we're going to give you an opportunity to do that, I'm sorry. Administrative oversight, nothing intentional.
Okay, so, let's reopen the hearing, and do we need to...
So a motion to reopen the hearing?
Make a motion to reopen the hearing.
Motion by Member Menard, seconded by Member Spencer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Now, I'm just going to make an administrative note pursuant to Robert's Rules of Order. The board omitted public concerns and comments, so there needs to be a vote to rescind the vote and approval, and an opportunity for the public to be heard, and then another vote can be had. So is there a motion to rescind the vote?
I'll make a motion to rescind the vote.
I'll second it.
Member Menard, seconded by Member Sprata. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
And the, the hearing was previously reopened. Chairman Delaney, your floor.
Yeah. Please, why don't we start over? Tell us your name.
Okay, I'm George Sisson, I own C Concrete, east of the solar panels, and my question is, is it the northeast corner that we're talking about? Because I had called into the town when they were putting them up, that they were too close, that you could not see pulling out of my driveway on the Broadway. All you see are the panels. So if they're six foot wrong, they should be moved. I'm in construction, I build houses, do foundations, and if we're not in code, we have to move them. The fence isn't an issue. You can see through the fence. It's the panels that are obstructing vision. And like I told the board that, all the people from the ice cream stand, they all park in my lot. People go there and park there with kids and pull out, and that, you're not from the area, but that corner on Broadway, that curve, it was the most thickest curve on Broadway with accidents, because you can't see no cars coming now. And as far as vegetation, you said it's growing? Uzair just started to put the topsoil down. It just started last week, so there's no grass growing, so I don't know where that came from.
Are there any grass in that corner?
Yeah. Existing grass that was there, that's about three feet tall. Because that's another thing, who's going to maintain that if they cut it?
So that runs on the developers? They have a, they hire a contractor to maintain?
Mr. Sisson, there's an obligation on the property owner to maintain that property. If there's ever any issue, come let us know, we'll get someone out there.
Okay. But like I said, I don't know with the panels, I mean, that's, we did have a call into the town and...
I took that phone call.
I think, I think you came up, but I think you misunderstood, because there were trucks parked on the sidewalk.
That's exactly what I misunderstood. I thought you couldn't see because of the, the trucks being worked on at the time, so I actually had them move, so I do apologize.
That's what my wife said, they misunderstood what we asked for, but, but you know as well as I do, that corner, they come around there like a bad hound.
Yeah, especially if it's larger trucks or equipment or something, that is, that is definitely dangerous.
So I'm just more concerned about...
Our voice, ourselves, the people next door, the kids next door.
Ma'am, we just need your name for the record.
Our carolings and stuff.
Thank you, same address?
Yeah, yeah. But that's, like I said, I mean, go down there and pull in my driveway and pull out.
I, I did, yeah.
And just look, and, and all you see are the panels. You know, it's the angle that they're on and everything, it's just like...
It does obstruct your view. I do agree with that.
So that's why I wanted to come and express my opinion, you know, just for the safety of all the people that work for me and the people that work next door.
Do you think the moving the fence is a compromise on any level that will address the public safety concern?
I really don't know with the fence, because the fence you can see through, panels you can't, you know? The fence is all portable. It's all in concrete pads, and can be moved and its fence can be shortened. I mean, if the fence is brought back off the property line, as far as on the, on the Broadway side, that would probably help a lot, you know? So it's hard to say, I mean, it's, until you, until you get in that driveway and you pull out and go to look, it's, it's tough.
Is it both directions when you pull out of the driveway to look and see, or is just looking in the direction?
No, just the west.
Looking west, you have the most problem looking west as you pull out of your driveway to pull out.
Yeah, just because you, like I said, it's...
That makes sense. I, yes, it's, it's the west corner there that you pull out and look west. Understood.
Yeah.
And at this time of day, if you're looking west from that driveway, you're looking into the sun. As well.
Right, the sun's on its side in your eyes.
Yeah.
It's, it's, I mean, compared to what it was, I mean, it's like putting a wall up there and not seeing it. It's, like you said, nobody does this, you know, there. There's been many bad accidents when I've been in there in the winter time, cars go right across, you know?
Well, not here, that's...
Can I, couple questions? How high are those panels? I mean, okay, the high, the high end, because obviously they're angled.
Yeah, at the bottom, probably four, yeah, three, four feet from the ground, and if they are six and a half foot tall, about 10 feet.
So having the fence on the corner, being a 90-degree thing, is that more of a visual deterrent to see down the street than if they did, like what, what the, my motion was to, if they...
Angle the fence?
Angle the fence.
The pan, see, the panels are on an angle right there. They're following the road, so they're turned, you know, they're not...
They're straight.
Yeah, they're not straight with you. They're turned, that you're looking at the panel.
Yeah.
You know, that's, if they were more parallel with the road...
Right.
Then it would be okay, you would see, but they're on, like, say, like, 45, that when you turn and you look, you just see the panels.
You know, I don't know if this is something that's allowed or not, but is there a way where we could take a 15 or 20-minute recess, take a ride over, take a look at it from his point of view, and then come back and deliver it?
We can Google Map.
Well, Google Map isn't going to show you from his, his perspective.
Well, it's...
I, I think that would be inappropriate. While we're here for the hearing, after closing the hearing...
Or maybe table it till next month?
Does anybody want to?
Table it?
I can show you all.
From, like, his driveway towards the west?
It's from our access road, which is directly between his shop and property inside.
That's not going to show anything what I'm talking about. I live right, right around that corner too, so.
Up east, east of the corner, I'm in the brown building, yeah.
So you're talking about this corner, right? When you look out, that's what's in your way?
So when he pulls out here, this way, it looks left.
Yeah, so if we were heading there right now, your shop would be before you, right?
Yeah, he's looking at panels.
Between the ice cream place?
Yeah, I'm way over here, yeah.
Yep, so that's...
So when he pulls out of his driveway, he's pulling out like this, because that's angled. He looks left.
So if that, if that road continues to turn, wouldn't your driveway be sticking further out from that?
Coming out of the corner.
Oh, his probably, back comes to the right. I'm very familiar with that. They're, they're access driveways were road straight on Broadway.
Yeah, I understand.
Yes, which is right between the arrays and his shop.
Just for clarification, this is you, correct? That's your shop. So you pull out this way?
Yes, your driveway is way over here, and then it rolls back.
Right. So when you look left, you're not seeing much past here?
No, not at all.
Another question?
Yeah, I want, I would, yes, I'd like to see it.
Bring it, show the football.
Yes. So this is his shop. When he pulls out, he pulls out this way.
That's a view from him. That's a view from his driveway.
He looks left.
So that's from our access, which is between his driveway and our raise.
So he can't catch this, but he's.
Because it's just the bend.
But he has basically the same view.
Yeah, he's looking right at this.
Okay, I'll look at that one too.
Yeah, so he, he asks this to get to this.
Exactly.
I know, it's a big bend there. Thank you.
So this is his, this is his driveway. He pulls out this way. When he's sitting here waiting to make a turn, looking left.
And this is his driveway?
So that's our access road.
Your access road.
It's directly between the arrays, so his building is to the right.
So he can't see past this. He can't pass, see past your driveway.
Building is closer to Broadway.
Once this, if this is your driveway and he's here.
You can't even, you can't even see the driveway.
His parking lot.
I understand, I'm just trying to get a perspective on where everything is. So he's over here, so if this is the sidewalk, his sidewalk's going around, his driveway's basically in here. So he can't see past, he can see past your driveway, but he can't see past the bend with where the panel sticks out.
Yeah, this one.
Correct. Right, correct? Or am I looking at it the wrong thing?
That may be the case, I haven't seen it myself.
The speed limit on Broadway is 40, right?
I don't know, I'm not as familiar with the roads, but if you, if you say it then.
Guys, 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 we are, we are making a record here. We can't have.
We can have people talking over one another, yeah.
Okay, sorry. Um, we have to type up these minutes.
Thank you.
So let's, let's refocus here. Mr. Sisson, is there anything else you want the board to consider before we give the applicant an opportunity to respond?
No, just like them to look at it, you know, like, like you said, that someone can go out there and look at it and see what I'm talking about, and, I mean, picture shows it right on your phone that the road does turn.
Do you have any pictures to show us tonight?
No, no.
I did, I did look at it, and it's, it's pretty clear that it's, you know, tough to.
Yeah.
I saw how it, how it is on the curb, and yeah.
Who's that big, couple of grass that's in front of it there?
Yeah.
Same one. Okay, so I think we'd like to offer you a response now. If you would come forward and, and just tell us what you'd like to respond. Mr. Sisson, comments?
I'm unfamiliar with where his drive connects to the road, so I don't know the curvature, but from where I see out of my access, it would lead me to believe that instead of seeing maybe 150 yards to the west, he's only seeing maybe 50. He does still see a little bit, but I understand how it can be obstructed.
On a good day. On a good day.
Okay.
This way, so it does severely obstruct the view. I do agree that I was there and I did look at it.
Typical access road here on the side, is that a usable driveway?
That's for their access.
Yes.
Just there, it's not like in the middle of the thing where that.
Now, you could recommend that we table this till, she would have to recommend tabling it till yous had a chance to go out and take a look at it yourselves to make a determination.
But the record is what's presented before you. This is a public notice hearing. You are not the investigator in this case. You have to decide the facts that are presented before you. If the applicant asks for the easement, that's a different story. You can consider that, but don't consider it to launch your own investigation into this matter. Consider it because of the reasons the applicant presented, okay?
May I say one other thing?
Please. It's yours, or is yours?
Yeah, so that entire row is not in the easement. So if we were to move anything, it would only be that corner table, which consists of a dozen panels. It wouldn't be that entire row.
Right, but those dozen panels are encroaching, that's why you're here, right?
Correct. I'm just saying, I don't know if it would help with clarity of the road since the entire row wouldn't be moved.
Think a better question might be, is there space on the site for you to reallocate those panels if you are forced to move them?
That is another question that I have no say in. I know it's been talked about with the developer, and we could not come to an agreeance on where to place it, which is another reason why I'm here today.
Is that because there's not enough room? Or is it because they just don't want to?
There's not enough room.
I think they tried to maximize all the space they have.
Well, great, of course, but.
To make sure of the business. Okay, so I, I hate to be this vocal here because I'm just your counsel, I'm not a voting member.
Please.
You voted initially, and due to an administrative mistake, we failed to ask for public concern and comment. You've now had extensive comment from the public, and you should base your vote on what you have heard from everyone. It is entirely up to this board. You have a decision to make.
One other question.
Member Spencer, please.
The part that's encroaching the area that we're talking about, is that the part of the array that's in the air, or is it where the base is?
It's the air, the part, the panel that is in the air.
In its.
The base is out of the easement, only the panel that is in the air.
So at 10 feet up, it's hanging over like a tree.
Correct.
All right. I'm going to go back to my original motion, that with the change of the fence angle, we give the variance, but from the pictures we've looked at, and I don't know if we have to move further. There are a lot of tall grass there that's uncut, which I can see that being a very hazardous condition for anybody trying to pull out of either his property or the ice cream place. This picture, I remember when this one was taken.
It is very high up there. I was, I was just out there.
Well maintained, you know, maintain a good sightline around that curve. That does create a dangerous situation just by the lack of maintenance on that property part where the grass is, so.
Member Spencer, I'm going to respectfully ask that you reframe your motion in a more clear way.
Okay, so I was to go back to the original, move the fence, make it within, just with my comment about the grass. But that's not.
Okay, so you have a motion on the table, do we have a second?
What? Say the motion again.
The motion is to approve the variance with the stipulation that the fence be moved. It's the same motion that you voted on before.
Okay, just want to be clear on it.
There's no second, the motion won't be moved.
Do we have a second?
Remember, you have to vote yes a few seconds.
I make a motion to second the motion.
Okay, seconded by Member Menard, made a motion by Member Spencer. I'll give a roll call vote ahead, please.
Member Spencer?
Yes.
Member Sprada?
Yes.
Member Menard?
Yes.
Acting Chairman Delaney?
Yes.
For yes, zero no, variance approved.
Thank you for coming back in.
Yes, thank you all for hearing me.
And again, so sorry we didn't call you up at first time.
No matter what, still the structure's obstructing, it's not 30 foot behind. I don't care if the basis is.
Somebody did do their job here.
It's the overhang that's encroaching. You build a house, the overhang is part of the building, correct? That has to be off the property line. You have a fireplace that's overhanging the house. That's the furthest point of the house. The furthest point of these solar panels are instruct and obstructing, do not be on right away.
I understand.
No, apparently not, because you voted, then it's okay.
Human life doesn't matter.
So if somebody gets killed, who's going to get sued? The town, because you approved it?
We would be happy to talk to you after the meeting. We have to keep our record clear, because someone has to type up everything we've recorded here, but if you want to stick around, I'd be happy to talk to you. I'm sure Cole would be happy to talk to you. And I'm sure your new neighbor here might be happy to talk to you and come up with another solution.
She's done, she's going back out of state. Well, apparently it doesn't matter. I mean, there's nothing going to be changed, you, you approved it. So there's nothing to talk about.
I understand.
Thank you all.
Please take notice that the Zoning Board of Appeals of the Village of Dupuy will hold a public hearing on June 27th, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the municipal building, 85 Manitowice Street, Dupuy, New York, to consider the application of Dennis and Suzanne Palutro for the property located at 47 Stewart Drive, Dupuy, New York, 14043, of Chapter 260, subset 260-14B1H, to be allowed to construct a concrete driveway four and a half feet past the allowed five-foot projection in front of the principal dwelling. A pre-board meeting will begin at 6:30 PM in the conference room of the municipal building, 85 Manitowice Street, Dupuy, New York. Any and all persons interested in such application will be heard at this time.
Step forward, sir. My name's Steve Hoffman, I'm representing the homeowner here, if there's any questions. We had poured the concrete pad, not knowing there was a setback from the side, only going five feet, or it's 10 feet, right? 10 feet? What is it, 10 feet from the corner?
Yeah, it's 10 feet.
10 feet. So we encroached four and a half feet unbeknownst us, and we worked with your building department to file for the variance and try to get this thing taken care of. There's no detriment to the neighborhood, there are other houses in the neighborhood that have double driveways. The house was constructed in the 60s, where single driveways were very common with most households having one car. They have several vehicles. The winter is a, is a hard time for them as far as moving them to get out in the morning. And the driveway looks good. Again, it does coincide with other houses in the neighborhood.
Member Sprada, any questions for Mr. Hoffman?
Not right now, it's, I think the work is done, right?
It is done, yes.
Member Menard?
None for me.
Member Spencer?
No questions.
Questions, comments, concerns from legal?
Nothing from me. Let's just remember public concern or comment.
Thanks, ma'am. Appreciate that.
Anything from Coke?
Uh, just want to clarify for the record, it's already, it was already 5.5 feet, they want additional 4.5, so they're actually asking for five foot of relief.
Relief.
Of relief, okay, so we all understand that.
So five, not five and a half?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so with that said, I'm going to read the criteria for an area variance, questions and events given. Number one, will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties be created by granting of the area variance? You wrote no, other houses in the area have encroached on the five-foot distance from the corner of the house, and I think that's part of what you said.
Yes, sir.
So that's true. Number two, can the benefits sought by you, the applicant, be achieved by some other method other than an area variance? You wrote no, and that's accurate. Three, is the requested area variance substantial? You wrote no, and I would agree. Number four, will the proposed area variance have an adverse effect or impact the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? You wrote no, other neigh, or other houses have two-car driveways, and that's true. Five, is the alleged difficulty self-created, which considerations shall be relevant to the decision of the Zoning Board of Appeals, but not necessarily preclude the granting of the requested area variance? You wrote unable to park two cars in driveway. I would just say yes for this. And number six, was minimum area variance deemed necessary and adequate? We had 5.5 feet written, but it's five feet as we discussed a second ago. Okay, so with that said, do we have a board member that would like to put forth a motion to grant or deny this variance?
Before we make a motion, can I just make a comment? And I talked to the owner yesterday.
Please.
I was concerned with the water runoff from his house, because his gutter pipe ends where the existing driveway and the new driveway start. I said I don't want it to create hazard in the wintertime with water freezing. You know, people slipping. And he said he's willing to move the downspout to the other side of the front of the house, have it drain on the other side of the house where there's no concrete.